I suspect we have about everybody. Any else who are waiting on them? We'll get the formalities out of the way. This open meeting of the Groveland zoning board appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland zoning board of appeals is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. I'd like to open the November 18th, 2020 Groveland zoning board of appeals meeting at 7:34. All right, just looking for the correct agenda. There it is. All right, so on their agenda tonight is the continuation of application 2020.3 for 301 Main Street. And the continuation of the application 2019-3 for 4 Sewell Street. I believe we're going to do the 2020-3. It's going to be relatively short tonight and get that closed out. So I suppose I will make a motion to reopen. Application, the public hearing for application 2020-3, 301 Main Street by Mike Allard requesting a variance to utilize the site for the purpose of personal use, hobby shop, tool storage, vehicle storage, personal vehicle or repair. Section 405 of the Groveland zoning bylaws does not list a personal use as an allowed use. This site is located in the business zoning district. The proposed project is located 301 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. Accessors map 10 parcel 001 and owned by Zhong Yang, 10 Blue Jay Road, Lynnfield, Mass. 01940. All those in favor? Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson? Kathy?
Sorry, I was muted, but I said I, sorry.
Whatever, do we have?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, at the last meeting, the board requested that I confer with town council in regards to the proper procedure concerning use variances. I have done that and I shared that information with you via email. Before the record, town council has confirmed that per section 14.7D, it expressively prohibits granting of use variances in the town. And thus, the ZBA has no authority to grant the requested variance. So the board is either to deny the application or the applicant may withdraw.
And hello, and this is Lee, I mean, sir, can I talk about comment for this, Jason?
Yeah, if you want to make a comment.
So as I understand it, I mean, my, I mean, surely, I mean, thinking they said should not have a two-year limit for the site. Because 301 Main Street is involuntary, the garage site was involuntary by the state order to build a new bridge for the Groveland. It means to benefit Groveland residents. But the canopy is always used and this is a single lot and the site is always used, never, never not used for the whole site. And the lots used and the canopy is used and the people, post office uses one and to parking the car and the custom parking over there. And this same thing happened for the 293 Main Street, which was across street for the, for the mortgage company. They are involuntary closed for two years. So I think, I think that means the board should approve this, this, I mean, application and move forward. Because, I mean, and the same situation for, for both side and the one is involuntary closed. And this side is forced by the state and to benefit the town people. And this is the best opportunity for the town to have this usage to put it, put into the building. I mean, also the canopy is always used, people park car over there and the canopy is a part of the structure of the 301 Main Street.
Well, I just want to basically for a comment on my side of this is, as far as I've understood from our town council and what I've been told, we cannot approve it legally.
Yeah, what I said is, they should not have any variance required for that. This should, we should be continue to use for this site, should have no limitations for the two years limitation. See, this side is not used, this side is always used, canopy is always used over there, the lot is always used. And the same thing to the 293 Main Street, 293 Main Street, it was closed for two years, was involuntary. And why they can continue to use and this cannot, cannot continue to use.
Jason, may I?
Yeah.
So, Missy, Missy Yang, so the problem, I think, is that the Groveland zoning board, I'm sorry, the Groveland zoning ordinance is very specific and it says that we cannot grant a use variance. Now, I know what you're trying to say is that you should, that your grandfathering should not have expired. However, that building was not in use, although it was a canopy, maybe the canopy was used for parking, but it really wasn't used as a garage. That's the legal issue that we have. And the reason why the people across the street are allowed to do what they're doing is because that's an allowed use in the area. A personal use is not an allowed use in this zone. So, but it is a business zone and you can have a mortgage company, you can have a store, you can have those types of items, but those, they also, they picked an allowed use that's on the table. And that's where the problem is, like, we have, it's, it's very clear and town council has made it very clear that we can't hear this. Either we have to deny it or you have to withdraw with prejudice. Those are the two options. So I don't know, if you, if you don't want to withdraw, that's fine, that's your choice. Then we have to go forth and make, make a decision that says that we can't hear it and then we have to deny it. So it's really up to you, you have an opportunity to do, to withdraw without prejudice, which means that you can come back within a two-year period. But if we actually do a denial, then that means you're, you have no, you can't come back for two years on this particular use. So I would.
Well, we do, one thing I'll add is that if we do a denial, then you have the option to appeal. You don't have the option to appeal if you withdraw. So it depends on what your, whether you'd appeal, rather appeal, what town council's recommendation is or whether you'd rather withdraw and come back.
Yeah, but why, why the cross street don't need to go to the any board?
Because they haven't allowed use that's already on the table.
Yeah, but, but I have, I have applied for many allowed to use. What did I apply for the letter from you?
You're.
We can only comment on the application that's in front of us right now. We can't debate across the street because that's not on the table right now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, across, and your previous denial was based on a variance, not on use. Your previous, the issue you ran into previously was a variance for, I believe it was parking, which was not based on the, the specific use, we weren't looking for a use permit. So there are two different issues. But again, you know, you, you have the option, you can either withdraw and we can close this out, or you can continue and we can issue the denial and then you'll have the option to appeal that denial.
I just feel, I mean, I was treated by town very unfairly, I mean, I will let the applicant decide what they want to do, I mean.
We're gonna, we're gonna just withdraw.
With or without prejudice?
Assume without.
Okay.
Do they know what the difference is?
I do not.
Can you explain it?
I had a feeling. So if you do, and Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, and I know there's an attorney on here too who can correct me too, or at least a couple of them anyway. So, but if you withdraw with, oh, that means that Lee could come back and request a different type of variance or whatever, but not a use variance because we can't do use variances. But if you draw, withdraw with prejudice, that means you're just done and you're done for two years. So my guess is that you would probably want to do without.
Yeah, yes, I would say so, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, do we want to, how do we officially close that out? Do we need to do a motion?
I would recommend that you would make a formal motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal of the application. And then if the board, so D, sorry, may also vote to return the application fee for the applicant due to the misunderstanding of the process and sending them through the zoning board of appeals for relief that the zoning board of appeals could not offer.
So I guess I'll make the motion that we accept their withdrawal without prejudice. And that I will also make a motion that we return the application fee due to the fact that the zoning board cannot offer relief for this type of application.
All those in favor? Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson? And I, Jason Norman. Should we make a motion to close? That.
I'll make a motion to close application 2020-3.
Second.
All those in favor? Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson?
Aye.
I, Jason Norman. Okay. And with that, we will, I will make a motion to reopen the public hearing on application 2019-3. And let's, Rebecca, do you have anything you need to comment on?
No.
For this, I know we usually do for, for a denial or, you know, approval or whatever, but for this, I don't think we have anything else.
No, I think you covered all your bases and closed the hearing and voted to accept it, so I think that's, that's fine.
Thanks, guys.
And make a motion to reopen the public hearing on application 2019-3 for 4 Sewell Streets. Groveland Realty and Trust LLC, Karen William Daley, request a comprehensive permit pursuant to provisions MGL 40B, 20-23 and 760 CMR 56 to instruct 192 apartment units in four residential buildings, a clubhouse with related amenities such as pool and associated accessways, sidewalks, parking, utilities, stormwater, infrastructure located in the industrial zoning district. Somebody want a second?
Second, sorry.
All right, Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson? Listen, that was an I. I could read John's, Chris with lips, but. And I, Jason Norman. All right. So we have most of the updates to Paul's decision documents here. Paul, is there anything you specifically want to get clarity on?
Off the top of my head, but I'm scrolling through now. I do know you all wanted to review a proposed plan for signage, which I did provide to Rebecca and hopefully circulated to all.
Yes, thank you for that.
I always try to do my homework.
Do you want to do that first, Jason?
Sure.
So Joel, do you, do you want to maybe just say a little bit about what the signage plan is, just introduce basically sort of what you're doing?
Absolutely. So if you all remember and included as part of one of the attachments, we had an architect prepare a rendering of a ground sign to show the quarry apartments in Groveland. So what you have is part of your presentation as you come up with Sewell Street, which is the location of that particular monument sign. So I provided that in addition to a two-page site plan where our sign contractor was kind enough to show the location of proposed signage that is typically as part of any project of this nature. So as an example, as you come up the hill, we want a speed limit sign. We're going to want directional signs that say building one or whatever the post office and fire department agree upon the address, the clubhouse. And all those signs are really part of the package. What we tried to do was to show both the proposed location as well as the type of sign, what it was intended for, and what the, what we believe are the appropriate sizes of those signs. We've not had a graphic designer take any of the remaining signs throughout and add a logo or anything, we haven't gotten that far into the process. But we did try to show you where stop signs and handicap signs and fire lane signs and speed limit signs and building designation signs, what they would be, where they would be located and what their proposed sizes are. And again, all of these are back in contained within the property and help to navigate and ensure, you know, everybody's safety and navigation throughout the site.
Thank you for that, Joel.
And the, the issue of the signs is addressed in the waiver section under number 12. It's on page 30. Attorney Talaman did send some suggested changes through this draft decision that included some language within the, the conditions to address the signs. And I thought that language was fine, so we can get to that. But obviously, that hasn't been incorporated into the draft that you have in front of you. So do you see number 10 on page 30?
Number 12, I think you went.
I'm sorry, number 12.
Yeah, number 12.
And we can look at number 10 while we're here, though.
Yeah, we still need to, I believe we still need to finalize pen. One question back to the signs, I remember we were talking about the, the markers for the back on, I believe it's I-6, if I got this marked correctly. The markers every 50 feet and exactly where those were placed and the wording on that, do we ever, do we have any?
Jason, that's.
Any additional comments or?
That section was revised.
Yes.
To incorporate the language that was in Attorney Nylund's suggestion because that was what we had discussed at the last meeting. So the language that's in I-6 now is what comes from Attorney Nylund because that's what we had decided was going to be applicable.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we got that as we talk about the signs because I, I can't remember which version was which or what the, I remember discussing specifically the, you know, the, whether or not it was an exact placement or whether or not there should be some wording to give it a little more leniency based on issues with terrain and travel and all that.
And again, my science.
Yeah.
If you have one quick question, Joel.
Sure.
Will there be a stop sign at the end of Sewell Street entering onto Salem Street?
Of course there will be. And if it's not shown there, that would be a life safety issue without question.
I assume so, but that's why I just wanted to just ask to be sure.
Yeah, we don't want anybody careening out into the intersection, wouldn't be good for business.
And I didn't see any other stop signs, but I'm assuming there may be others, you know, as you're leaving one building and going out to the main, you know, maybe entering onto the, the main, the main road in and out, I'm assuming you'll probably have a couple.
Absolutely. And any sign that goes to life safety of that nature would of course be included in the packet. They were, I didn't think those were the types of signs we were, you were concerned about or wanted to understand. They're assumed to be on the site for safety purposes, absolutely.
I totally agree, I just wanted it on the record, thank you.
Other than that, there really, there weren't a lot of open issues from this draft beyond what we had discussed at the last meeting.
Paul, did you see that on section, on waiver number 12, that there was some additional language that Attorney Talaman had given you that was not incorporated into the draft?
It's not in waiver number 12, it's additional language that would basically reflect back in the body of the decision, the fact that they have submitted the information with regards to the signs because what had previously stated was that they had not yet submitted the sign information. So it's just making these two consistent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So waiver number 10, I guess we can discuss that. Waiver to allow a parking design that does not include the required one sheet tree per eight parking spaces. The applicant intends seeks to provide landscaping for parking areas as is shown on the approved plans. I don't believe we really had discussed that with any specificity previously. I thought that was something that the board needed to have a conversation about. Not everyone at once.
Well, I, obviously, I mean, I've seen the plans and everything, so I sort of knew from the beginning that they wouldn't be complying with that particular. And I think that was in their original list of waivers too, so. I'm okay with that as long as, because I think, you know, the landscape plan is going to be approved later on administratively, is my understanding, so. But as far as the parking, I'm okay with that, I don't know what the other board members feel, but.
Yeah, I think that they kind of have a lot of that covered, I mean, since it's, since the parking is so broken up and obviously the, there's going to be, you know, trees and landscaping spread throughout, I think the inclination of what that, that was trying to accomplish will be accomplished with landscaping by other means.
I, I feel like that.
From the buildings and everything else, yeah, large parking lots that are.
So, but, but I agree, I feel like it's all broken up anyway, so it's not like mass parking. Chris or John, do you have any?
I'm thinking without it, it'll make snow removal a lot easier, wouldn't it, Bill, Mr. Daley?
Yes, absolutely. Though my name's not Mr. Bill, but yes.
I see you there.
That will keep it cleaner, then I, I mean, typically what I see in those applications, you would still paint the island with the same markings as the, as the traffic stalls. You could hash them or whatever, but, um, but yeah, we'll keep it a lot cleaner with the ice also.
Yep.
Kathy, you're right, I think that that particular regulation was more geared to the big supermarket parking lots where they often have a sea of asphalt and nothing to break it up.
Exactly, but I think because this project is sort of spread out and the separate buildings and separate landscaping for each, I, I think it's more than, I, yeah, I never had a problem with that.
Yeah, agreed.
I really don't have any other substantive changes that need to be discussed. Again, I know that Attorney Talaman had submitted revision with some suggested changes, so perhaps he wants to walk us through that? We can discuss them.
Can do that, they're very, very minor and some are just, some are just questions. We just get to the top of the conditions.
Some of them are just correcting typos from me.
Yeah, it's just a couple of things that we collected punctuation along the way. Let's see. Heading back up today.
And somebody 10 years will look back and want to correct the punctuation again, I'm sure.
Probably be me.
Jason, if you can give us a section and number or page number to help us out, that'd be great.
I will, as I go.
Six is the first one.
Which one?
Eighty-six.
Yeah, just a typo.
Yeah, just added an S requires rather than acquire.
Right, typos on A72, just spaces, extra spaces.
All right, Jay, that's usually my job on the board is to correct punctuation and spaces.
Well, he has to send Bill a bill. Well, he has to send Bill a bill. He's got to give him an invoice. C one, C.
I'm happy to hand it over for this particular thing.
C one, C, is that the next?
C one, C one, C. It where it talks about the final plans having all of the conditions listed, and I don't know if you wanted every single condition listed on the final plans, Paul.
Um, I, I think relevant is, is vital if it's okay with the board.
Right. Obviously, anything that affects the plans, but other things where the construction or whatever, but trying to save paper there.
I'm fine with sticking with what's relevant.
Right. Um, let's see, scrolling.
Wanted to add an if applicable on C two, C.
C two, C. Yeah. So, because I, I, I believe Bill said that there wasn't necessarily going to be phases here. So.
No, I mean, from a logistics standpoint, one would say that, gee, no, it's an all or nothing. Now, the only phasing would occur is obviously there would be sequence building, but not phases. That's not the intent.
I just, I put it as i- if applicable. Think I had some in E, yeah, E six.
That was what we were just discussing.
Yeah, so that one just needs to get either updated to, I, I, I know, I don't really care how we do it. Um, in terms of a recognition that there's been some signage and, you know, see the waivers, or I don't know how you want to write that, Paul. I just wanted to flag it.
Maybe an overall signage plan.
It'll now say appropriate signage shall be shown on the final plans, consistent with the sign information shown on the approved plans.
Sure. That sounds good.
F two.
F two. I changed the, on the, there was a typo plus it said that um, the applicant's legal rights used Nelson Street was challenged. I don't know if it was a challenge so much as a discussion, frankly, I didn't want to characterize it that, that way. I didn't change anything else. I just substituted disgust for challenged. I know that a neighbor What's that? That's fine. It just, you know, challenge seemed a little strong.
I think questioned is in the middle.
Questioned is fine, so I got that in there now.
Okay, G one. And this is more of a question for Joel, because I think we discussed this. It says the applicant shall provide professional property management and maintenance personnel on the premises during normal daytime hours. And I know we said it's not twenty-four seven. And I couldn't recall what Joel said about um, if they may have a presence there every day or not.
Well, a- and, and honestly, to be quite honest, it varies. Typically, in a situation like this, the office is open six days a week. Uh, during the lease up period, it might be opened up seven days a week. So I would be more comfortable with uh, committing to uh, you know, something that says typical business hours and most weekends or something to that nature. Um, but again, we're trying to predict something in the future. And it has a lot to do with staffing and other things that occur at the time.
But thi- this provision relates to property management and maintenance personnel.
I think typical business hours is fine.
Thank you.
You know, because the contact, the emergency contact information would be there if something were to occur.
Absolutely.
Business hours or on a weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would just change daytime to business hours.
Okay.
Hey, I'm good with that.
We know it gets dark at four P M now.
Hey, don't remind me.
H three, I added the word administratively. I think that it's kind of inherent in the way Paul wrote it up. Um, it says the, the modification if the fire department wants to move a hydrant, it's going to be accepted as an insubstantial change. I just added administratively so that we doesn't trigger a whole process that is normally, that it normally triggers. I trust that's okay, Paul?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, ultimately, if it's admitted, if it's accepted as an insubstantial change, that is in, in administrative process. It's only, it's only a duly noticed public hearing if you wind up with a determination that it is a substantial change.
Well, I guess the question is, is if the fire, if the uh, fire department wants the hydrant locations changed, do we still have to submit a notice of project change at all, or can that be handled just administratively?
Well, I think handling administratively requires the submittal of revised plans showing the location of the hydrants so that you have correct plans on record showing the location of those.
Well, we, we would, we would typically in a project like this have an as-built site plan that would be submitted that would show the final location that was agreed upon, but the, the stand pipes and hydrants obviously get uh, done in the design stakes. So I don't care either way, but um, but it's, it's fluid until the fire department proclaims.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe save the, you know, an extra agenda item for the board. If the fire department wants them moved a hundred feet down the road, I'm not sure we have to take up the board's time, but Paul, I'll defer to you on that.
Well, I, I mean, if, if that's the case and, and the fire department requires them to be moved before final plans are submitted, you still have to submit final plans. You show that on the final plans. You ask for the, the approval under the regulations as part of the submittal and it's all done in one, one process.
I mean, that's fine. We'll, we'll do it, we'll do it that way. I mean, I think we could do it without submitting something, but that's okay.
Well, again, my only concern is that whatever the ultimate final plans are, show the correct location for the hydrants.
It's fine. It's fine. That, that's okay, you know. Um, let's see, uh, I two. It said, you know, we, we obviously are within, we're within the buffer zone. So it says no structure requiring a building permit including but not limited to dwellings. Well, actually, no, it's fine. You could ignore my thing because it's talking about structures. We're not doing any structures within the, with the locally defined resource area, so you can ignore my edit there, Paul.
Okay.
I twelve.
I ten.
First, oh, ten, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just an extra word there. Um, I twelve, just a, I just wanted to that's during construction for those monthly reports. That's consistent with other provisions.
That's fine with me.
J five. So.
First portion, mine, change the language.
Yeah, the first one is yours. The second one is mine. I didn't want to make it, and this is really a, a change for the boards and the towns benefit. The town is never required to perform any maintenance. The fact that they have the right to under those documents is fine. We don't object to that, but they're, they're never required to do it. So I just want to say that they, if they opt to do it.
That, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. When, when I say is required to, I meant by circumstances, not by someone.
I, I just, I don't want the, I don't, I don't want the residents to say, hey, town, show up. It says right there, you're required to do it, so. That was kind of me putting on my town council hat there, so. J six, I don't care about that first sentence, but it's a repeat of what you said before.
Let me finish changing J five.
Okay.
Uh, because you added in accordance with this paragraph.
Yeah.
Typing was the best course I ever took in high school, and I thought it was just to be with girls, but it ended up proving well in my life.
And it didn't help you with the girls.
No, it didn't.
Moving on, J six.
J six, that, that, you already have that sentence previously. I don't care if you have it twice. I, I just, you know.
Right. It will save me from having to renumber everything.
Right.
Lot of renumbering left to do.
J seven is your change, which was a holdover from my change from the prior. Um, and I took out a J ten because there is no J ten.
On J eight, was it? On J seven, I just wanted, I left that track so that the board could see because we had discussed that at the last meeting, but I hadn't, you know, you hadn't seen language, so I wanted to make sure that you had seen this.
Other than that, I, I think it looks great. I think it's a, a real, really well done. I think, I think we're all really pleased at how everyone came together on this.
I'll second that emotion.
You got one question, uh, Jay, as to I twelve, um, the reports. Just dur- during construction, is that just during construction in the buffer when I'm working in the buffer zones? Or during the whole project?
Yeah, we had once discussed that once the stabilization was done and we were no longer anywhere in the buffer, that we wouldn't necessarily be required to provide that. Um, but of course, anytime we have any risk in the buffer, we have no problem doing it, so. Sort of way we can define.
I think that for, for it to be consistent with I thirteen, what, what still has things going to the environmental monitor throughout construction, because erosion control is always going to have, be an issue on that. It, it, it's, it's fine. I mean, I, I hear your point.
Well, that's fine. I, I guess that will run with the order of conditions. Once I get a certificate of compliance, we'll close that out also. The reports, there wouldn't really be the need for reports after that, right?
Well, n- not necessarily because this board regulates the um, buffer zone, so that this, they, they can go a little further here. Anything that could result in siltation or anything like that buffer.
So if we, we revise that to say during construction while erosion control measures are required to remain in place?
Sure, perfect.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be muting myself again for the rest of the evening now.
If only your family had that option, Bill.
Board have any?
Say, did your team authorize you to talk?
Does the board have any other questions or concerns about the draft decision?
I thought it looked really good. But I think you guys handled some of the uh, the little stuff that I, you guys have already addressed them, so.
Yeah, I didn't have anything else either.
Yeah, same.
We covered it all.
Well, I think you're ready for a motion. First, you know, close the public hearing and then make a motion.
Already?
I thought you were muting yourself. Go back to mute.
I can't, I can't.
Bill, let's why keep it going for a little while.
He's been sharing sixteen months worth of reminiscing with me, so, you know.
Oh, we're gonna do every other Tuesday.
Just really gonna miss us.
I am, I am actually. I miss this.
We can delay it a few more sessions and then Kathy will leave and then I'll have to start all over again.
Oh, go ahead. No, 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 let's wrap it.
I miss you that much.
All right, um, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on application twenty nineteen dash three.
Second.
All those in favor? Chris Goodwin?
Aye.
John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson?
Aye.
And I, Jason Norman.
And I think you can just accept a motion to grant the comprehensive permits uh, consistent with the draft as discussed.
Yeah. I nominate Chris to do it.
Go on, Kathy, you're the best at wording these ones.
What?
Might be a last chance.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to um, approve a comprehensive permit in accordance with the draft provided and discussed at length. That was it, right? Anything else?
Seconded.
All those in favor? John Stokes?
Aye.
Chris Goodwin?
Aye.
Kathy Franson?
Aye.
And Jason Norman is aye.
The decision has been sent to Rebecca Oring.
As a closing comment, as a closing comment, Kathy, I wish you well, all of you. Thank you for your patience. You've listened to us for a long time. I have no doubt we aggravated you at times and, but we've tried to, you've been a tremendously fair board to work with and appreciate everything you've done and your patience. Thank you.
I just have one quick question, just in terms of procedure, if I may. Is the, um, so now that the decision has been granted and they, they signed the decision, is it the typical file it with the clerk and it has to sit for an appeal period? Does it have like, is it a typical wait time?
Twenty day appeal period.
So it, it's the same standard procedure?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, to the extent there are appeals and since the applicant is receiving a favorable condition, I'm going to presume the applicant doesn't intend to appeal. Um, but appeals by a butters are the exact same route as a special permit or variance appeal. It's a forty-eight seventeen.
Okay, so then, all right, so uh, as soon as I get the signatures, I can tie, I have how many days to get the signatures and timestamp with the clerk? The same typical, even though we've extended?
Forty.
Yeah, you, you actually have forty days from the close of the hearing to get the decisions filed with the town clerk and get it actually issued. Can't imagine it's going to take you quite that long.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, well, it's been a pleasure working with you all.
Paul, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And please, everybody be safe. Please take care of yourselves. Bye, Kathy.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be safe.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Nice again, bye.
Bye.
Well, now what?
Well, that does lead me to ask the question as to when do you all think um, you would be able to, or how do you want to go about getting the decision signed? Um, I know town hall is still closed to the public. Um, I'm going into the office on Wednesday. Um, I've been meeting other like planning board members and, and applicants and, and residents in the parking lot if they need something or to sign plans, so um, maybe next Wednesday, any of you have some time to, to stop by and I can just run out the decision and have your signature or um, I can, you're all local too, so I can, I don't mind dropping it, driving by and, and dropping it off at your house or um, I know Jason, you have a difficult schedule with, with um, availability during the day, so I don't know, I can try and stay late one night if it works better for you.
No, I don't have any issues during the day. I'm here all day.
That worked for me.
But actually, next Wednesday is basically a, you know, holiday anyway, so, well, at least for us.
Yeah, it's the day before Thanksgiving. Are you going to be there, Rebecca?
Yes, I'll definitely be there. I have to uh, post an agenda for the planning board the following week and to take care of, so I would definitely be there.
What, what time would you be? In the office?
Um, typically, I um, am there until nine to five, but I'll probably try and take off a little earlier with the holiday, so probably more as closer to four.
Plucker.
You ready in the morning, Rebecca?
Yep, I, I'm, I'm there at nine.
Okay.
Well, Rebecca, what I'm wondering, um, because I probably won't be able to make it during that timeframe. Would you be willing to send me the electronic copy and I'll sign it first and drop it off for you? And then everyone else can sign?
Sure, so um, you wouldn't, when you drop it off, you could put it in the, the treasure collector's box, the slot over there? Do you want to do something like that?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Like, if I had it, I could do my signature and then I could drop it in the box and then you'll have it in the morning to meet these fellows here to get their signatures. Would that be okay?
Perfect, definitely.
I don't want to hold you up. That's what I.
I want to accommodate you, uh, of course. I want to accommodate you, of course, definitely. So I will, I will make sure to get the final draft over to you and then just let me know when it's there and I'll coordinate with the assistant tax collector to get that information and get it to the other gentleman to sign for Wednesday, the 25th, in between nine and four. And you can certainly send me an email or, or send me a text message or give me a call, and I'll, I'll meet you out there to make it convenient.
So Rebecca, one last question. Do we have any applications for December?
No, we do not.
I did not. So I guess that leads, so can we do open discussion quickly? Jason?
It's up to you. I
So, I guess, so some of you, actually, most of you already know, but I've sold my home in Groveland and, and I've tried to find a rental in town. I can't find one, so we're actually going to move out of town. But ultimately, we're headed to Florida, so I'm going to have to resign my position as of tonight, actually, because I was going to come to the December meeting, but since we're not going to have one, I guess this is my last meeting, because I'm moving December 5th, so.
Well, sorry to see you go.
Good to see you go.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry to go. I, I can't believe it. I, I've been on the board, I feel like forever. So I'm going to miss you guys, and I can't say I'll miss 40B applications, but I'll miss.
Well, hopefully, we'll have to worry about one of those for a while, though.
Ten more years. So you guys will be in good shape. I feel like you're leaving in, in good shape, but we do need that extra member to come on for the next meeting, whenever that is, Rebecca, if we can find him.
Good idea. Have we heard back from him at all?
I have not.
So we're going to be recruiting?
Yeah, I just start the rounds again.
Yep. Okay, so you guys want to do minutes or?
I do have one correction on the minutes. I have Jason listen, listed as present and also absent, so I have corrected that.
That's a neat trick. How do you do that? I want to do that.
Well, his, his name was on the screen.
Well, I can just watch it after now, so everything's recorded and then.
I will make a, a motion to accept the minutes from the November, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020 meeting as amended.
All those in favor? Somebody want to second the motion? Did you second it, Kathy?
Seconded, yeah.
Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson?
She said it.
I did, aye. My last official aye, except for adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:25 PM. I think the earliest.
That's a record.
I know.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Chris Goodwin? John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franson? And I. Jason Norman.